Let us pray. Holy Master, we thank you this evening. We thank you for allowing us to come out to take care of this city's business. We ask that you be with us and keep your love and almost around us as we try to deliberate and make the best decision that we possibly can. We ask that you be with all of us that are here. We ask that you bless this city, bless this country and nation. And these blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Robertson?
Yes, sir. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you see that, you know, our group here, we're not just a bunch of folks who work together and come and come out here and do eight or 10 or 12 or 24 hours and go back home. We're a family. And tragedies and catastrophes and death touches us just as it does anyone else. We've had a member of our work families, family to pass away during the past week. This is the mother-in-law of Captain Sherman Burrell, and that is appreciated also, a relative of all the woman, Betty Olive, Ms. Martha Grant, who's an outstanding citizen and who's contributed and mastered to this community. Would you join me in just a moment of silence in her memory and the memory, in the family that she leaves behind? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Mr. Elton Boyer.
I didn't know Mr. Boyer had passed.
He was a long-serving member of our work family who just ceased his will in a moment of silence in his memory as well. Again, thank you. Did Mr. Boyer live over on top of, uh...
The intersection of McPhee.
The intersection by the church over there? He's the one who came to get me and talked to me about the trees all the time, the trees behind the church in the ditch. Yeah. I know, I had not seen him around for a while. He was, he was really concerned about his neighborhood and, uh, the concrete trucks that used to turn into that concrete plant over there, and he always said that they tore the street up and didn't fix it back. So, those kinds of citizens, we definitely do miss. Madam Clerk, will you call a road to determine a quorum?
District A.
Present.
District B.
Present.
District C.
Present.
District D.
Present.
Here.
Thank you very much. A quorum is determined. As far as announcements are concerned, the first thing that happens is congratulations to the city of Bastrop for winning the cleanest city contest in this district. They came in and judged, I believe, last weekend. We swept them. We, we beat all the competition. It was a tough race. We had some strong competition, but we won, and a lot of appreciation goes to so many volunteers and so many people who worked to make this feat possible. We definitely appreciate the city crew, but as I always said, it's not that we don't appreciate what they do, but that's what we do. That's what we get paid to do, and we're supposed to keep the city clean. But that, in addition to us doing what we're supposed to do, we had so many volunteers who live inside the city and who outside the city limits of Bastrop who dedicated themselves to helping us secure that victory. The judges came and rode the route, and the word that I got is, uh, the city looked as clean for this preliminary, this district event, as it did last year when we won the state. Our effort now is to win the state competition. That's gonna be in May. What date is that, in May?
May 7th.
May 7th. And what we're gonna try to do is to use the Bastrop High School football team as our model. They, they did a three-peat in football championship, so we're gonna have to do a, a repeat this time and on the way to trying to do a, a triple. I was with Mayor Jimbo Pettigian of Crowley just, uh, Rain, I'm sorry, just yesterday, and Clarence Fields of Pineville, and those are the people that we competed, compete against on the state level. So, they won that district, and they say, "How are we coming after you? We gonna get it this time." So, it's up to us to do our part and, and just make sure that that, that does not happen. But thank you to all concerned, and I'm not gonna start trying to call names because if I do, we'll forget it, but you know who you are, you know what role you played, and no matter what the role is, there are no big roles and small roles, whatever you did, if it's taking care of your own yard, picking up trash, calling to let us know where there were issues, we, we really appreciate that. Things are going on in Bastrop. I had a meeting with the mill manager in there, going through that transition for that new process, and businesses are coming in. I got a call from a local development company that's doing shopping center development, and they wanted to name some contractors. They're about to add several thousand feet of space in one of the shopping centers here. During this past month, we've talked to individuals who want to develop property to open additional retail stores and other developments. So, things are happening. Business, businesses are looking forward to coming in. We're losing some, but we're gaining more than we lose, so we appreciate our citizens as well for making this a viable community. I take this opportunity as well to thank the staff members. Sometimes I don't say it publicly, but my department heads, I really appreciate what you do in your various departments. You, you do an excellent job, and we keep things together, and it's, please don't ever think that I'm unappreciative, and I was sharing with somebody maybe in a staff meeting, I'm always trying to find better ways of doing what we do. You know, we do something and it's good today, I, I'm gonna say, "Okay, how can we do it better?" And it's not that what we did was bad, but I just believe in improvement, and we should all do that. So, thank you for what you do. Let's go to the, let's see, where do I wanna go? There's something I want to do. I'm gonna, I'm gonna rearrange stuff. Item number nine, with your permission, is resolution number 081233. This is a resolution commending Arthur Jones upon his retirement as Public Works Director. Uh, Arthur's in the audience, and he hasn't had a chance to sit that far back in this building in a long time. So, Arthur, would you come up?
Yeah.
We just wanna recognize you at this time for your work. Now, he hasn't officially retired yet. He's, he's, he's a retiree in, in practice. His, his retirement really is April 30th?
April 30th.
April 30th, but he had a lot of comp time that was available and that he had to use, so he started taking that comp time. And, you know, the understanding was, okay, this is trial retirement, and during this period of time, if you don't like it, you know, you can always reschedule, come back, so. But Arthur, thank you so much for what you've done. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, you have that resolution number nine in your packet, and it, it, it states all the good stuff about Arthur, and we're not gonna stop and read it, but it's, it expresses our sentiment, and it's a, a resolution in recognition for his many, many years of service. Arthur started as a, you had a lot more hair and was blacker and a lot less weight, right?
A whole lot less.
In prison, I'm like, man.
Yeah, but then the city's been good to him. He's fat now, right? But, but Arthur has contributed from being Director, Assistant in Parks and Recreation, to Recreation, Parks and Recreation Director, to Public Works Director. A vast reservoir of knowledge and history in the city of Bastrop, and that's the one thing that we lose when people retire, when people leave us. We lose so much history. I can remember Sam Williams and, and Moselle Smith, they knew wherever a manhole and connection was in the city of Bastrop. Billy Higman and people like that, and Arthur's leaving with a reservoir of knowledge, and regrettably, we can't transfer that knowledge, but we can transfer the dedication that you have for the city of Bastrop, and we really appreciate what you've done for us. So, ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, can I get a, a motion to adopt resolution number 081233?
I'll make that motion, ma'am.
I tell you, now, we have never had this before.
Oh, everybody? Okay, go ahead.
Sounds like the last he leave, man.
Somebody has...
No, 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 no. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm happy that the, the, the motion is made by three or four folks at one time, you know?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a second on that, on that motion?
Second.
Mr., Mr. Gordon seconds that, that motion that was jointly made. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose should say no, and the ayes have it. You say no?
No.
Okay, let the record show. You don't wanna see him go, huh?
Keep him here with me.
So, one, four ayes and, and one no, but that, that I, that no is definitely for selfish Ms. Goldman, who's our official, uh, social coordinator, has said that we're gonna have a fantastic and large retirement because we have so many people to recognize very soon, Arthur, and, and you'll be notified if you still retire after. We're gonna wait to, after April 30th to be sure, then we'll, we'll have a party, but you'll be coming back, and we will present this resolution after it's properly formed. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give him a round of applause. And I did that since you, I did that since you retired. We, we're gonna make you stay here during this whole time, again. And now, uh, item four is to approve minutes of previous meetings. We had a meeting on March 13th, 2008. This was a regular meeting. I hope you've had a chance to review those minutes, and if so, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Hawkins, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of March 13th, regular meeting.
Mr. Gordon makes that motion.
I second.
It's been jointly seconded by both Ms. Robertson and Mr. Lino. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, and the ayes have it. We had a special meeting on March 17th.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Olive makes the motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second her motion.
Mr. Gordon seconds her motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Item number five is Finance Committee Report. Mr. Hamlin.
May I make a motion that we adopt party number 084163, here's a claim for the month of March.
Mr. Hamlin has made a motion.
I'll second.
Jointly seconded by Mr. Gordon and Mr. Lino. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no, the ayes have it. Item number six is Main Street Update. Mr. Breen?
I know the mayor's already kind of informed y'all. That was one of the projects I've been working with too, is the, uh, the Keep More House Beautiful campaign that we started off. We do know some of the competition by now, and Mayor's right, Pineville will be in there as well as Morgan City, and Morgan City, Morgan City beat us a year and a half ago. So, we really gotta work hard so we can defend our title, and there is possible that some more will be coming on, so we're excited about that. We've got a good plan of, of action on how to execute some of this stuff, and the city has been great working with us.
One of the things I learned is they, they restructured now their 12 districts, I believe?
Yeah, that, that's what we were kinda thinking, there would be even more competition in this state program, and there still may be some more coming in, they said.
Okay.
This is what we know of right now, so it was supposed to be a little tougher this year.
Okay.
Also too, since I spoke to, to the mayor last time too, we, uh, Keep More House Beautiful had written a grant, uh, for $15,000 to further, uh, litter abatement and things in the parish schools. We've already done several of them, but there were four remaining schools, and this even includes the private schools such as Prairie View and things like that. We were, uh, we were kinda surprised because there was a lot of competition there, uh, 'cause so many other cities have become affiliates of Keep America Beautiful, but we were awarded the $15,000 grant, so that's another big deal. That makes $50,000 worth of grants that Keep More House Beautiful has gotten for litter abatement of, of various kinds in the past year, maybe a little over a year, but that's a lot of money coming into the city that I'm glad that we were able to get. Other, you know, we're entitled to it, just like anybody else is, so it's, it's gonna help the, you can see where the trash receptacles are placed at, the schools that have gotten from the last grant, and they are much cleaner. The judges even commented how clean the playground was at South Side, and they've got cans, uh, nice trash receptacles that have been placed throughout the campus. So, we were excited to be able to get this grant and do even a little more of that. We are in the process right now of, uh, trying out, or listening to different bands and things to get Music on Main Street kicked off for the summer. We're planning the big event for that in the next, uh, month or so. Uh, if you know of any good bands or anything, let us know. We're, we're trying to get some really good people coming out so we can draw a big crowd to downtown. Uh, I know we always mention the Old School Project. It is alive and well. I know the mayor's received some information on it. I mean, we got a packet, Sandra did last week. It's, it's in the works, it's still on go for this summer. Looks like that that's when they're hoping to get things really kicked off with that. So, it's still a very viable project. It's just, things like that just take a long time, slow-moving wheel, but it is good to go. Other than that, I have been mostly, uh, working on cleanup, so hadn't been focusing on a lot of other projects. Got some training and things that we've gotta go to next week. We'll be doing, for the facade grant trainings, you know, we were awarded a grant to redo the Swan Theater building and the building next to it, so we're hopeful that some of the people that didn't, weren't able to receive the grant last year will reapply and be able to get it possibly this year. They, the state said our applications were really great, but only one could go to Bastrop, so I'm hopeful that we'll get another set of buildings redone this year through that. Yes, ma'am?
Is that the building right across from Lee's Drugs that's got the forest growing inside?
No, ma'am.
Oh.
No, the buildings that, the fronts are already redone on the buildings that, uh, that I'm talking, that got the facade grant. That's the old theater building and the one next to it. I think Ms. Martin's handling the other problem.
Well, I wanna get over there and take a picture of that before it gets fixed.
Yeah.
That's kinda neat.
Looks like jungle in there. Uh, but we, there are two other people that are gonna be interested in the grants, I'm hopeful, and, and they would both be really an asset to have redone for downtown, so we're hopeful we'll get that. Other than that, that's kinda what we've been working on.
Would you talk about the landscaping around?
Oh, yeah, I was, I did, didn't have that written down.
And Mr. McKee might come up and join and talk about the fountain?
Mr. McKee, that's a sore subject with Mr. McKee.
No, I mean, we, we deal with sore subjects here.
The, uh, one thing I always wanted to get going since I got here was the fountain, and, uh, we were, we were able to get a little bit of grant money, and the, uh, the mayor was willing to pitch in and help out with it too, and, uh, it's almost ready. Uh, Mr. McKee hopes to have it ready by April 30th, and we would, of course, love to have it ready for when the judges come by. Uh, and so it's in the final stages. It, it would be a, I, he had it on yesterday as a test, and I saw it from the courthouse though. It just looks so alive down there. You know, it's really gonna be, enhance the whole city hall project, I think, and we've even got, we're still continuing the landscaping, uh, since we've met last time. We removed all the overgrown shrubs and things that just gotten out of hand, and they weren't able to be pruned back into shape correctly and stuff. So, we've got a lot of low-maintenance stuff. We were able to use the existing crape myrtles that were there. Now, it's gonna be low-maintenance, and there's some space for a small amount of color and annuals and things like that. And now down into the plaza area will be next, where the fountain's at, we're gonna be doing some stuff down in there. Make it real inviting to come down in there.
Okay.
Do you wanna tell them about the fountain anything?
The fountain project is alive and well. And I, I'd be happy to answer the question. We did do a test run of the fountain yesterday because it had been a while since it's been on, and we found that we had a good bit of rust and silt built up in the pipe, uh, but it ran for, oh, I'd say four or five hours, no problems. Uh, we, we have about three or four other items to fixing the project, but, and, and I set a deadline of April 30th to give ourselves some time, because as you know, it's been not running for a while, so we're gonna actually probably find we have a few little amount of problems that we didn't even know about.
Okay.
But it should work.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
And I'll give you all a call, each council member a call when, when we, when we get it up and running properly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
May I ask Mark a question?
Yes, sir.
Mark.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's been some time ago since it came up, and I don't know if you was around Right in the front of, of the building, city hall, you can stand up there and, and look down and, and see everything, but when you look up on the, on that wall, a segment across the street, it, it, it's not, well, what's the possibility of having a mural up there?
That would, of course, be up to the, the property owner. Any kind of mural would have to be at the property owner's, you'd have, they'd have to be worked with. It would, my, I don't know if it'd be very, to get the size of the mural, that wall, I don't know about, cost prohibitive for someone to do. It would take some...
Pete King?
...organization for sure to get some funds, and here's the thing with murals on big, big buildings like that. They need to be done in, in panels that are removable because as the mural deteriorates, then it becomes an eyesore, so you need to have something that, like a panel that's removed and you could refurbish that pa, you know, they need to be done in large sections of, not on the wall.
Well, Mark, what, what kind of grant can you get to do something with that?
I'm not aware of any mural grants, but I'm not gonna say that they're not out there.
What is, what can be used in place of a mural? Something.
I don't know, other than a fresh coat of paint, you know, just, I don't know, they may not be opposed to a mural. It'd just be, uh, the other thing is too, is finding, those large murals are really expensive. It'd be finding the, the funds to pay for it and an artist that would be able to do it. Not an impossible task, but, uh, something would have to be, put some work into, for sure.
Thank you.
A lot of people have, have asked me about that same thing.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm glad that I'm not...
You're not alone, by any means.
Ms. Robertson?
At one time, Mark, you might check. I know this person probably wouldn't be in the Sheriff's Department, uh, in the detention center this long, but sometimes they do have some very good artists...
Mm-hmm.
...that have done work for us before, so that's a possibility if you check with them.
We used one one time, yeah. I know who you're referring to, Wesley.
So, well, you might can find him. He might not be in jail, but he may be around.
That's true.
Or they may have another one.
That's right.
This is hopefully, hopefully the last question. Did I, did I remember, do I remember something about the, uh, the police jury talking about turning off some of the lights around the square or something?
They are, uh, that's, I'm not involved in that, but I can tell you what I do know. They're, and the mayor, I'm sure you're aware of this, eventually you're not gonna be able to have incandescent lighting. Everything would be fluorescent lighting. That's...
Energy efficiency.
Yeah, it's gonna be mandated through the state or throughout, I'm not sure where. Uh, well, as it stands now, the fixtures that are at the base of the courthouse that shine up on the courthouse at night, the bulb alone costs like $50 or $75, some crazy price like that. So, the, uh, so, and most of them are out, so they'll spend thousands of dollars replacing the light bulbs, or they can spend just a little bit money, more money, and change out the entire fixture to a fluorescent fixture that, where the bulb will cost like $5 to change out.
So, it's the, it's the floodlight shining on the building rather than the lights around the, around the sidewalks?
That's correct.
Okay.
The streetlights, eventually I think they can be changed just to a fluorescent bulb, if I'm not mistaken, but right now the concentration was around the base of the courthouse itself.
Okay, all right. Thank you so very much. Ms. King?
Thank you, Mayor Hawkins and City Council. I always enjoy coming and giving you a report on the things that I've been working on, and I'm gonna try to be brief tonight because of the length of the agenda for tonight, but I would like to give you an update on the Bastrop tank wash. That sale is still moving forward. I answered a few questions, and we're, we're still dotting some i's and crossing some t's for the loan, but I really believe that that will close, the sale of that building will close before the end of the month, that, so I'll be coordinating with Mr. Lawrence to see that we can get that moving along. I wanted to just say that I'm still continuing to work with, I know it was in the paper in, in, in the earlier meeting, I was treating it pretty confidential, but everyone knows that the Toyota dealership is selling and that the GMC dealership is going to be Toyota, and I've been working with the buyer for that and trying to coordinate some things to, to help in that sale and continue to have that business in the city of Bastrop, but I think as this moves forward, you're gonna see that that's gonna be a very exciting development for the city. We'll also be continuing to work with, uh, Mr. Lawrence on that over the next few weeks to try to get some things done. One of their concerns was about a traffic light. That doesn't have anything to do with the city, but we've got some traffic counts in there, but I don't know if it's gonna justify a traffic light at that intersection, but the, the traffic at Marlette has been increasingly a problem, so I have been in contact with District Five to try to see if we can encourage them to put a light there. I've been there at that intersection, it's very difficult to get out, and we have some new car counts or new vehicle counts for that intersection, and it has increased since the Walmart, and what surprised me is there were over 1,500 cars or 1,500 vehicles per that count on the 29th of February for Marlette, so that's a lot of automobiles coming through. But we'll just have to see if, if they get the light, and, um, I can't, I can see that the traffic is gonna continue to increase there, but I will work with the city if there's anything that we can do to help, uh, our new business owner with that. And I wanted to let you know on the SMI Company's expansion in the industrial park, we are still continuing to work on that. I'm waiting for some data to come back from Louisiana Economic Development. I appreciate everything that the city of Bastrop does and the excellent job that the, um, employees within the city do on reporting and a lot of the things that we have to do to make that happen. It really does take a lot of coordination of effort between a lot of people to be successful in these projects. The SMI is growing, they're very happy with their location out there, and I can see that this is a business that can continue to grow in our area, and we'll continue to encourage young people to go into the welding trade and all as we have a local employer to, to encourage them to get that kind of training. And then, um, I would like to give a report to you. I know that we had a lot of interest in the USDA project to do the sewer work or to do some sewer planning on areas out, US Highway 165, where sewer service is not available through the city at the moment, and I know that, uh, that there were many people in the community that are taking an interest in this. I did get that grant application to the USDA, um, and I, I hand-delivered it to the USDA office in Alexandria because that way I got to talk to the people down there, and it took me a couple of years to get the first grant. I'm not sure that, um, you know, I got it down there, we'll just have to see how it goes. I will be looking at some other sources of funding, looking for some other sources of funding for that, because I think that we do have a consensus in the community that if we had some sewer service on further out on the US Highway 165, that we might be in line to get some of the growth coming up from the Storlington area. And the last thing I'd like to mention is that this week I've got our GIS system for our office, and I'm getting everything set up, new computer and Arc, ArcMap 9.2, which is a ESRI product, a leading company in GIS software, and I hope to be adding some additional services in our office that we can present ourselves a very, in a very technologically advanced manner and, and send email, app, email responses to proposals and have good quality aerial photos available in our office for, to promote our area and do marketing. So, I do, I've got the software and the computer, and I hope to be getting all that set up. My, I guess you could say it was my minor area of concentration was this, this software. When I went, when I completed my master's degree, I had three semesters of this software, but it is not a software that you can just take out of the box and suddenly say, "Oh, I know how to do GIS," so it is a very hard software, and it takes a little bit of time to get your resources built up, but it should work hand in hand with what the city's doing with, with planning and zoning, and I hope to work closely with the city and hopefully identifying properties that we might put into action, uh, you know, put into some type of, um, product, productive manner back into the community, and, um, I do hope to work with the city more in the mapping, and we will have the resources in our office to do that now. So, that's about the conclusion. Does anyone have any questions about anything? Does anyone have any questions about anything?
I do. What is the quota for a light to be installed? You said there were fifteen hundred vehicles that passed through, back to the Toyota?
I'm waiting, I have a call in to District Five, the District Five office, and I'm waiting to see. They wouldn't really give me a set amount. I thought that was a pretty significant amount, because if you consider that was over a twenty-four hour period, and if you have fifteen hours of peak time during the day, that's almost a hundred cars an hour, so that's more than one a minute if you start looking at it like that, that's a lot of traffic. But they don't really give you the criteria, and I'm sure there's a lot of factors that figure into that.
Did they do a study at Grabout and four twenty-five?
Yes, sir, they did, and they said that it did not, they did that last year, and they said at that time it did not warrant a light.
I'm surprised. I would think that the volume of traffic at Grabout and one sixty-five, at four twenty-five was heavier than coming out of Marlette.
It's amazing how many cars come out of Marlette, though. I was there at five o'clock one day, and I think a lot of people cut through.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Litzfield?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Real quick, I met with DOTD in Baton Rouge yesterday to get an electric gate for our airport. Sat down with Phil Jones and Mo Sanji. They approved it, and they're gonna pay for it.
This gate will be where?
It will be actually on the access road where Marlette loops into NAFTA, and our access road goes into the airport.
The main entrance.
It'll be the main entrance. They balked at the three gates, said they'd finance one gate, totally remote control.
Now, that gate will be connected to the rest of the fencing?
Correct. And that's an 'oh nine' project that's absolutely in the works.
So, you know, let's not expect to see a gate out there real fast, because we gotta get the fence there.
No, we'll have a gate first, sir.
Oh, so we have a gate first?
We'll get the gate, and then they'll bring the fence to it.
Okay, all right.
Well, there's a ditch on each side of the road.
No, no, I'm not questioning, I don't question gifts, no, sir, thank you.
It'll secure the airport a lot more than it is.
Fantastic. That's a good gift. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I thought you liked that, Mayor. Got another one. All the tree grubbing and the cleanup of where we cut, where we expanded to, from three hundred to five hundred feet plus, both approach ends of the runway. All the grubbing and cleanup and planting of grass or hay, your choice, once it's all cleaned out, and the maintenance of it forever, will be funded through the reimbursable maintenance fund by DOTD. So we get a minimum of fifty percent reimbursement, and I believe he said, correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, but I believe he said the maintenance and diesel fuel involved will be paid for. But I'll clarify that and give it to you.
Wonderful.
So there's another gift. Another gift is, I'm in negotiations with a private party that's, just wants to keep low profile right now, to build a ten thousand square foot hangar on the extended runway, or the road to nowhere, I call it. And if a couple of contracts fall into place, this person would like to build a second ten thousand foot, square foot hangar on a long-term lease, land lease for now, long-term lease, he'll build a hangar and it'll revert to the city. So, and it'll be state-of-the-art hangars.
He'll be building these hangars for his purpose?
Yes, sir. And it relates to the light jets, the military, the military's pulled out of Monroe, gone back to their bases where they used to train in those beach jets, and I'm in negotiations with the Air Force and Army now to try to get them back to Bastrop. The airplanes meet the requirement of our four thousand foot runway zone, I'm working on it. The only downside to this is, you know, as you know, oil prices are going crazy. This morning it was a hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-one cents a barrel, and it's up seventy-five cents from four months ago or something. So we can expect it at the airport as well as at our local gas pumps for our cars, a big surge next week, next week or two, the fuel price. We could see five fifty, five seventy-five for airplanes and probably four dollars or more for your cars by Memorial Day.
Well, I'll get my bicycle out.
Okay, back to good news. A flyable aircraft has been donated by Mr. Milan from Monroe. He emailed the mayor also of the donation. He called me today, and he invited me down Tuesday to Monroe to view the airplane. He's cleaning it up for us, and then he'll, we'll arrange to bring it up here, reassemble the wings, no big deal. We'll get our proper insurance in order, and we will begin flying lessons for Bastrop Wings at no charge to the student. Our intent is to get them their pilot's license for free.
Mr. Lawrence, and we've received donations before, but is there a procedure that the city needs to go through in order to accept a gift of that kind?
There needs to be a vote of the mayor vote of all persons to accept it.
Well, it'll come to Bastrop Wings. We have our own five oh one three C.
So it's going to Bastrop Wings?
Yes.
Okay, fine, good.
But it's not without all your support, believe me. None of this would be happening. Okay, so I'd like to invite the students of Bastrop Pi, if not now, as soon as summer hits, to come out and get involved in Bastrop Wings. Bastrop Wings is, this one kinda got to me, is gonna expand big time, beginning immediately. I got this email from the, from the US Army.
When you get an email from the Army that brings tears to your eyes, that's some email?
No, no, they said I was too old. And I was in the Air Force, so I don't qualify to go in there. Bastrop Wings has been asked to partner with the US Army Warrior Transition Division, Fort Polk, Leesville, Louisiana. Second, to assist in helping wounded Army soldiers returning from Iraq and Afghanistan to acquire a trade in aviation, and they solicited us to support them. So I'm on my way to Leesville next week to partner Bastrop Wings with the Army to help the troops.
So, in order to help these individuals who were wounded in combatant situations rehabilitate, they wanna use the expertise of Bastrop Wings to give them, help them acquire viable skills?
Yes, sir.
Now, will you get, will you be going, taking your skills down there? Will they be coming here to, that has to be worked out?
A lot of them have to stay near Fort Polk for medical.
Right.
The ones that are in the Monroe area, we are gonna cater to a hundred percent in Bastrop, or Monroe. If we have to go to Monroe and rent something. But Monroe's going more airline, so we're trying to push it towards Bastrop.
We have the facilities, and we are willing to accommodate that.
Oh, I'm sure of that. There was never any question in my mind, I immediately accepted this.
Now, I know that you and Mr. Gillette are trained in mechanics and aviation and all. Is there any other certifications that you need to get through the technical colleges or?
No, sir. If I was gonna train the Army, it would be through the Army.
The Army's training program.
Right, and the Army's gonna put their millions of dollars behind getting those troops a trade. Right now, Mr. Chapman's interviewing four hundred at Fort Polk to see how many might be interested in aviation.
So, and our wish is that the facilities used to train these individuals will be at the Morehouse Memorial Airport?
Yes, sir.
And this kind of activity would be conducted there? Does that make sense, ladies and gentlemen?
Yeah, and what'll happen is Bastrop Wings will use their, it's legal, right? The five oh one three C and all that, we'll just extend the umbrella to the Army, so they have their tax exempt thing in place, they don't have to screw around with that and go right to work. I brought that up to Phil Jones yesterday, and he just rocked back in his seat and, a hundred percent in support.
Fantastic. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you very much for the efforts, that's fantastic. That's a whole new direction that the city of Bastrop is going in. Wonderful news. You said I'd be happy, didn't you?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've done item number nine, and item number ten is ordinance number zero eight forty-one sixteen, ordinance establishing guidelines for communication and technology policy. I don't know who I was gonna talk about this, but this is internet phone use and all of that. Mr. McKee, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Floyd?
Mr. Mayor, I could speak to a minor portion of it. I made just a minor contribution to a portion of this. Most of it is Mr. Floyd and others.
Okay, let's talk about the reason for doing this, the purpose, the necessity of doing this, and then the document will speak for itself. Come on up, Mr. Floyd, please.
Well, I think that right now, with the, with all of the various types of technology that the city of Bastrop has regarding telecommunications, computer equipment and everything else, our, what we have is sort of run in front of our policies on an acceptable use of all of it. And I think this is an effort to put in place policies and in some instances procedures that will govern the appropriate use of city-owned technology, that's city-owned assets. And so that's what this document, as I appreciate it, attempts to do.
Okay. When I came here in nineteen eighty-nine, I think there were about three or four Apple three E's, or Apple two E's around here. And now there are, there is internet capacity throughout our organization and desktop and laptop and portable units and police cars and fire trucks and fire cars and all over the city. And with the liability that, potential liability exposure that exists, there has to be some kind of code, some kind of regulation, some kind of ordinance, some kind of directions for use to keep people from just sitting up and playing games and going to all kinds of sites and downloading stuff and contaminating systems and things of that nature. So, Mr. Floyd, that lead, that segue is into the necessity for this?
Yes.
Okay. Comments? Yes, sir.
I'm trying to think what I can add. I think you pretty much covered what I was gonna say. But, you know, it's just that, as I see it, the technology's growing so fast and it's weaving its way into everything that we do, and it's just, you know, it's gonna be important to get policies in place.
Okay.
I think Mr. Floyd did probably ninety to ninety-five percent of what you're looking at, at least it's my appreciation, can't be beat. The thing that I added is, well, as you, as you start to use things like email, you create another issue for yourself, and that is, a lot of this becomes, a lot of fits for the definition of a public record.
Shut up closer to the mic, please.
A lot of what you transmit is considered a public record, so on the last page you'll see a section that's entitled Public Records and Records Retention. And the thought is, if you're using, if you're using and transmitting electronic data in place of what used to be written documents for official use and official purposes, then there's an obligation there to retain it the same way that you retain paper documents and to make that data available to the public. So that was one addition to this, but Mr. Floyd really provided all of the rest of it.
Okay, there have been instances, my friend, the mayor of Detroit is in serious trouble right now for texting, for charges of inappropriate texting. Emails are constantly being confiscated or subpoenaed or called in for evidence or to support charges or to clear folks or to document communications, supporting projects. Sometimes people will say, well, you know, I didn't have any knowledge of it, but then it's okay, this was emailed to you, so, and that becomes public record if it's on a public computer, city-owned computer. It can be subpoenaed, and it is public information because these are public devices paid for by taxpayer dollars. So inappropriate activities going for personal use and things of that nature. Is, this speaks to that, and each person who has access or who utilizes, are all employees? Who would sign these documents?
I would take it it would be the intent that everybody that has access.
Correct, everyone who has access.
Telephones, computers?
Yes, sir. City email accounts, anything that's city asset.
Yes. Even if you don't, even if you're not using a computer, say you're just a driver, well, we're gonna be using GPS and tracking systems, so that all falls under technological umbrella.
So basically, all employees?
Yes.
Questions?
Yes. Who will be assigning the passwords? How will that be done?
I'll be assigning them, I don't wanna say the method of where the password's coming from, but it's, how do I put this? I'll assign them, the city will have record of all the passwords and everything, but it does come from a reliable method of where we're getting the passwords from.
They won't be creating their own?
No, no.
They'll be assigned, they'll be owned by the city and controlled by the city, and so nobody should know my password. It's available through the archives, through the source.
Correct.
But if somebody goes on and using my password, unless I gave it to them, they can't say that somebody stole my password. They guessed upon it, 'cause that won't happen, yeah.
Okay. Now, on the telephone usage, the city may periodically monitor the usage of the telephone systems to ensure compliance with this policy. Could you explain that?
I think that one way to explain it is that everything at City Hall belongs to the city, not to an individual. So a person that decides to use the city's assets should not have a, should not have an expectation of privacy, and I guess privacy shouldn't be a concern if you're really doing your work.
Right.
That's just the best way I can, at least that's my appreciation of what, of what this means. So the city does have a right to ask, who are you talking to to look at? A caller ID history if one is available, and to do any and everything else that's legal to be able to monitor, to find out exactly who's calling in and to whom calls are being made.
Mr. Mayor, when I was reading that, I had some questions too, but it might be a hope, I hope you just look into the future, trying to prevent things from happening. I hope you didn't stumble upon a bunch of stuff from the past that called you to do this, because I was, I was stopped once too, Mr. Attorney, about the, a person computer. Well, my response was, it's the city computer. We have a right to know what was on it, so there was nothing wrong with it being checked. Hope it's, hope it just a mean prevention for the future.
Yes. And we have something in there that says, any type of technology that, you know, that could be used for record retention and data, if something gets invented ten years from now, we're still covered.
Now, we have an internet use policy that, excuse me, that would be merged and tied with this, but this is broader than just internet use policy.
Yes.
I'm aware that in many cities legislative auditors come in and audit telephone usage, telephone usage of public bodies to be sure that the utilization of those telephones are for public purpose. telephone usage of public bodies to be sure that the utilization of those telephones are for public purpose and not for private purpose. Anybody who works, your family's gonna call, you know, at some time, but you're not gonna be doing extensive private call, long-distance stuff and business on the phone and things of that nature.
Correct.
And this, this is simply to, being in the twenty-first century and because of the access of these devices to employees, and sometimes we do get comfortable and think that because it's on our desk and this is my desk, I can use it in the kind of way and do anything I want to. But that's unfair to the person out there on the street who doesn't have that, that same, that same opportunity. So we're being proactive, I think, in establishing a policy and educating our coworkers as to what the rules are, rather than have to correct something later on, deal with an issue later on that might come up to create problems for us. I can't remember where it was. Was it a U L M where this professor was using the internet system over there to do porn stuff or, you, you remember that?
Yes.
Yeah, where, Mayor.
And, and, and it comes back, and if we don't take appropriate actions here, then we're aiding and abetting.
That's right. It, it is a problem if you don't have a policy. That's, that's right.
So that's why we're doing this. Any more questions? We need action. If, if you're comfortable, what are we doing, introducing this or we taking action on it?
Let me look at the end real quick.
I'm sorry?
I, I was looking at the.
Uh, no. This is an ordinance. It doesn't have. There are no penalties.
There are no penalties, so therefore, if in the, if there is a motion to, to adopt this, I ask that the motion provide that it be made effective immediately.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen?
Mayor Hawkins?
Mr. Gordon.
I'll make a motion we adopt ordinance zero eight dash four one six zero to be effective this date.
Mr. Gordon makes motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Olive seconds his motion. It's in any other discussion.
I have one question.
Ms. Robinson.
Would you clarify that you said there would be no action against anybody at this time if they were caught doing something that is involved in this ordinance?
I, I, no, actually, there's, there's a clause in there that says you, you can be subject to.
I, I thought the comment was that we didn't know of anything that was going on right now that, that prompted this. I, I thought that was what we were commenting on.
Yeah, we're, we're not saying we're gonna go back in the past.
Yeah, this is not a reaction to something that's going on right now that.
I, I know, but I just wanted to clarify that if there was going to be a legal action against someone if they were involved in this in the future.
Is the last paragraph acknowledgement of understanding. Last sentence, I understand that violation of this policy may result in disciplinary action, including possible termination and civil and criminal penalties. And that's gonna be dependent upon the level to which the violation is applicable.
Active as of now, not going back. That's what she was trying to get.
But again, this is not a witch hunt.
Right.
We're not trying to get anybody. If, if there was somebody that we, we wanted to terminate, we could do that because there's that will employment excepting the classified people. But what we're trying to do is set up the parameters, establish the rules, establish the policy. And part of this, and I don't know if it's in here, but we, we will have to have some educational sessions, some training sessions, some, yeah, informational sessions to let folks know what the rules are. Yeah. No sneak attacks. I raise my hand. Okay. If you're in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have. We be, yeah. Ms. Olive there. Mr. Gordon made the motion. Ms. Olive seconded. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Where am I? Eleven?
Eleven.
Okay. Ordinance number zero eight forty-one sixty-one and ordinance to amend section number ten forty, ten forty-one, and ten forty-six of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Bastrop relative to regulating junk. Ms. Martin, the COE lady, would you come up with Mr. Lawrence? There's some, there's some pieces of legislation that are, that are being introduced into Louisiana Legislature this session that's related to junk and blight and condemnations as well. But this is our attempt. So, Ms. Ms. Martin, you wanna talk about why this, about why we're doing this?
Yes, we had an ordinance that was junk and junk vehicle, and we noticed that the penalty phase and all of it wasn't streamlined. So we had.
Wasn't what now? Wasn't?
The penalty phase of it.
Yeah, penalty violating it was not, was not clear.
Okay. I just, I didn't hear what that.
Yeah, so we, we redid the junk vehicle, but did not include the junk.
Okay.
So we're having to amend that.
If you, if you look at the, at the handout, the, the actual ordinance itself, I need you to look at three places. If you look under section ten dash forty, which is on the very first page of the ordinance, and look down to, I'm sorry, go over to the second page. Go down to where you see the word junk that is in bold print, that section is new to this ordinance. And then if you go over to the next page where you see section ten dash forty-one, and you will see a subsection A and then a subsection B, it starts with the first word, junk. That's new to this ordinance. And on the same page, under section ten dash forty-four, subsection C, that's new to the ordinance that's numbered ten dash forty-four. And on the last page, on the second to last page, you'll see ten dash four six, which is the penalty provision. And what we've done is just added a couple of words in here, mainly the word junk. The, the intent is to include, some kind of a way, the original draft of this ordinance left out what the definition of junk is. So we went and amended these three ordinances to include it, and then amended the fourth ordinance, ten dash four six, to make it subject to the penalties of the city.
Okay. How, how does this tie to, and, and I've been asking this question throughout the state, to blight? And I'm, I'm trying to help and, and get, we're trying to get consensus statewide on the definition of blight as well.
Would you define blight as being unkept, or is it ruined, or?
Unkept of, 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 of blight. A building that is boarded up is a blight to a neighborhood. That creates blight. In a nice neighborhood, nice lawns, nice houses, and all of a sudden you got this building that's all boarded up. To me, that's creating a blight in that particular block or whatever. And, and I guess if I got a building, it either needs to be used or it needs to be torn down. What, I guess my question would be, what, what is, what is it being saved for? And I realize the bullets probably protect windows and all that kind of thing, but I'm pretty sure that a blighted, a boarded up building would have a negative impact on, on, on the property values and appearance and all that of a community. Would blight be a building that is unkept? And I know that this is, this is opinion, but just a ugly deteriorating building? And I, I could think of some. I can think of, I can think of a couple of buildings, one building in particular, or two buildings on Marable Street going in. They've been emptied for years and years and years, and they're starting to deteriorate and just crumble and fall apart. And just like tomato blight, it becomes contagious. So I don't think we have a definition in our ordinance and the state, from a statewide perspective, is toying with it, trying to define it to address it because it's, it's significant.
I think, I think probably the state of Texas has, probably has something like that. They, you know, they have, in Texas, they have eminent domain powers and condemnation powers that are really much stronger than most other states. I mean, they can just go in and just condemn something like that. And I, I take it, now, this, this particular ordinance would only come into play if, if a building just deteriorated to a point that it just started falling apart. Then, you know, when it's falling apart, the, the pieces would be junk. But this, this doesn't address exactly what it is that you're talking about, but.
It's a step in the right direction. So junk, junk in this, in this ordinance is not just cars?
That, and, and that, that's right. That's what the amendment is making clear, that it is not just cars. It is, it is other tangible things, other instrumentalities that, that, that just are not useful, trash, refuse, and everything else.
I have a question.
This is a poll to the council. The, the, the space next to Huddle House on one sixty-five, is that junk?
Who else?
Do I have?
On, on one sixty-five, going out next to Huddle House, all the stuff in the, is that junk?
That's antique, Mayor. They're making some changes out of that, out of that, the way it's float, but.
Yes. Well, I'd like to see it contained.
What's that, was that junk then?
Yes, sir.
It was? Okay.
I told him it was antique. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney, on, on the very first page, abandoned motor vehicles, motor vehicle should be deemed to be abandoned if, number three, it is left on private property without the consent of the owner occupant, or leasing thereof for longer than two hours. I read that and I thought about that. I've seen young men with teen women just park a car, if, if there was a, if there was a lot there in the driveway, then just park their car and get out and ride with their buddies. And, and we're talking about the span of, of two hours. If someone is living there in their house and, and on their property, and they park in there without consent, I can understand it. But if, if it's an abandoned, abandoned house and a vacant lot, and they park there for two hours, then that, that, that might be a little problem.
You see the difference? I was concerned about it.
Okay, so this is, is left on private property without the consent of the owner occupant or leasing thereof for longer than two hours?
Now, that's the definition of an abandoned vehicle, not junk vehicle, not a junk vehicle. And I'm, I'm, I was trying to, Mr. Hamlin, follow, are you, in other words, are you saying, what, what, what you just read, I think would apply to this. It would apply to if somebody that you didn't know parked a, parked a car in your driveway and it just stayed there. And stayed there and stayed there, and you came out of your house and you said, wait a minute, what's going on? Whose car is this?
Right.
I think what this says is the, the city, the city, law enforcement in the city can view that car as being abandoned and can take action against whoever the owner is on the basis of it was left on your property without your permission. I think that's what the intent of.
That's the intent.
Yes. Not to declare it as junk, but just as.
I wanna hear from him too.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I ask Mr. Lawrence a question.
Come on up.
In, in relation to what you just said about police could take action, if a vehicle's left like that, would we be the ones that to have the vehicle towed? Would this allow us to have it towed?
Yeah, because.
Because now the private property owner can have that vehicle towed.
Right.
But we can't. And would this ordinance give the police the authority to have it towed?
It, it would give the police the authority to go and arrest.
Oh, okay.
To, to treat, potentially to treat this as a crime for having left that car.
Left a vehicle.
In somebody's driveway, it would still give the private property owner the right to have it towed off.
Okay, sir. That answered my question.
You said the private, uh, property owner can have it towed.
Yes, sir.
One other question. I live in a situation where, you know, you have people who will park along the fourth side of the street, but it obstructs me. Some of these cars are longer than they used to be. You have extended cabs, you have these new trucks now and SUV. It's difficult sometime to get out of your driveway bagging out with someone. He on the right side, he can park it, but he's on the other side.
Mr. Lenore, I believe, and Doug can correct me if I'm wrong, if it blocks your drive, even though it's on the other side of the street, or you can't get out of it, then the police can have it towed. Is this correct?
Yeah, that's, uh.
That's all I need to know.
Right.
Thank you.
Back, back to number three. If a vehicle is left on private property for longer than two hours and the private property owner doesn't report it, then it's not an issue.
That's right. It, it is. That's right.
Going, going to Mr. Hamlin's example, the guys, somebody's hanging out and they decide to all get in one car in a vacant lot, say on Martin Luther King, and they just pull in that liter car right there and take off and leave it there for half a day. If the private property owner does not complain.
It's no problem.
It's not a problem. But if the private property, is that, am I reading that right?
That's the intent of it.
But if the private property owner complained and said, this car, this car's been on my property for more than two hours, and it's, I'm, I'm, it's, you know, it's abandoned. I'm considering it abandoned. I need it to be towed out, and it's gone. So somebody who happens to meet up and just park the car without obstructing anything, yeah.
I see.
And that's why the wording says without consent, and, you know, the only way you would know that it's without consent is because the person complains.
Who owns the property.
Right.
Okay.
One, one more, Ms. Martin. We, we talked about these houses situation. If a house is completely destroyed of use from a fire, and you're familiar with the house I'm speaking of, we've been trying to get torn down right there at the corner of Martin Luther King and.
Griffin?
Griffin Street.
Griffin.
What is it that we couldn't just let that continue to burn out? Rather than they have it stuck there for six months and do nothing with it?
Were you, are you asking me what, what are we doing about it?
No, 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 ma'am.
Oh. Oh, why didn't they let it begin to burn?
If a house is on fire, and the fire department respond, and you get there and you see the house going, when you get it, when you get it down to a frazzle and nothing else but a few, two by fours.
I've asked the same question, but maybe Chief Montgomery might answer that.
Does it burn out or rain?
So don't, you, you want, you want the fire department not to save it?
The owner probably glad, it'd be a hundred percent whatever.
Yeah, I think, I think though, the, the concern they would have is, well, obviously, if, if you knew for a fact that there was nothing of value in there, nobody's in danger, even that, even if it was carried over the next door, I think that would be one thing. But I think, I think, I think that's the issue. It's, it's what else will happen if we.
Don't put it out.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the question.
Especially with a crime scene or something like that.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Ms. Robinson?
Have, have they answered my question?
He, he, he put it.
I think they have to put it out if they're, they're called.
Everybody put it on that one.
They have to put it out.
Right.
Let, let, let us, let us work on that in-house, because I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting different responses and, and it's gonna, I, I can see it being a judgment call. But there has to be a, a level of comfort. Yeah. I think that's a judgment call, but Mr. Hamlin, let us.
Yes, sir.
Because I, I don't know if you guys can give us a right, a yes or no on that. I don't know if you can.
I'll spark it saying Chief Montgomery.
Well, I, I don't think that there's gonna be yes or no on every, on each issue.
It's a judgment?
Right.
Okay, all right. Ms. Robinson?
When you mentioned long ago about houses that you. When you mentioned long ago about houses that you board the windows, especially if a house is for sale, if you don't board the windows, they usually get broken out and people go in.
True.
So, I think we need to be a little bit careful on when, on that part of it. If they board them up to keep them from getting broken until they sell it or whatever. If it doesn't sell, is there some way we can address that later in-house? If it doesn't sell right away and other things happen to it? Or if it's in, if it's in ill repair to start with, I don't see any reason why we can't address it to start with.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right. Our, our issue, we're trying to address it. We've gotten a couple of allocations from the state to, to demolish houses, and, and we are working on, 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 we're selecting houses to do. And you're right, is boarding can be a protective measure to protect the value of it. But then we have some situations, I can think of a building right now that's been boarded up for probably twenty years. And at what point, you know, but, but you're right.
There's one other question, and while we're on this, as far as the houses concerned, and we all know who I'm talking about, but they were painted a bright color to kind of get back at us because we wanted to get rid of them. Is there any way we can address that situation?
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Well, purple and gold was not so bad.
I have no knowledge of which you speak.
I have, and while we're on the subject, I have a whole street I'd like to set fire to.
Public record.
I don't think I would mind.
Okay, this is being introduced, ladies and gentlemen. It'll lay over for a month. Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Bring up a point that I would like to factor into this. Okay, in looking at number three.
Number three.
The abandoned vehicles.
Okay.
It is left on private property without the consent of the owner. Would the owner have to wait two hours? Let's say if someone parks in front of their property before they get something done about it? Let's say if somebody pulls up in front of your property and you notice, well, this car has been left here. Would you have to wait two hours before something can be done, or could you?
Well, you have the trespassing, uh, ordinance, and under that one, you would not have to wait. I think this is, uh, when all else fails, and this car's just been sitting here. So I think you'd be, you could do it unless that, unless the time, the two hours.
Okay, that, thank, that answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, so this, this defines and identifies what a abandoned vehicle is, what a wrecked vehicle is, what a junk vehicle is.
Well, yeah, I think actually, uh, we're not changing that part. We were, we were, it, it's the part that addresses junk. We had, we just regrouted the entire ordinance to show how the whole thing would look under each section.
Based on your, on your worst-case scenarios, Ms. Martin, do you think this, this will address our issues?
Yes.
This gives you the authority, and the, and the court, you think, the authority to take action?
Yes, sir.
They should have no excuses?
Right.
Okay. Thank you both very much. This is being introduced. Let the record show. Since we mentioned in court, please be prepared, citizens of our community, to participate in the election of our city judges, because all, none of the ordinances that we pass have any impact if, if they're not interpreted and dealt with appropriately in the court system. The court enforcement officer can give citations, the police can stop and arrest and ticket people, which means they have to come to court. But hopefully, we, we need a court that is, is sensitive, but will give us the support that we need to make our community a better place. So, as you talk to candidates, I strongly suggest that you bring up to them these issues, because it's gonna be important to us in the future, if these ordinances and laws are to have any, any real effect. Okay, number twelve, an ordinance to declare surplus property and employ a licensed auctioneer. This is something that we do a couple times a year, don't we, Ms. Goldman? Ms. Hall? Once a year, we have an auction of surplus property. We can't give abandoned property, demolished property, tractors, tires, old computers, desks. We can't give that away and we can't sell it. We have to advertise and have a public auction where people, any citizens, can come up and bid on the item, and it goes to the highest bidder in this case. So, what we're doing right now is to declare surplus property, and we ask for your permission to, uh, contract with the licensed auctioneer to conduct this, this, uh, this auction. This is ordinance number zero eight forty-one sixty-two.
Mayor Hawkins?
Mr. Gordon?
Can you explain the process of acquiring the licensed auctioneer? What is the qualifications and?
Their state license, for one thing.
They have to state license, and we just contact them, and they give a surprise on what they'll take, which is a percentage.
Do you contact them by mail or telephone?
We usually contact them, and they'll give us the list if they're interested in coming. So we'll make sure we have a weekly contact list. And we did have another individual that you contacted earlier, said that he wasn't interested at that time, but they contacted him next time.
The reason, the reason for my question is, we have a, a local, uh, individual has a local business here that is licensed with the state, and William Burgess has, Burgess's Auctional Room, uh, beside Pine. And I, I would, uh, I haven't talked with William, but I would like to encourage some contact with William, give, you know, a local business opportunity to, to interact with the community and, and, uh, you know, he in turn pays sales tax and revenue here, so, you know, I'd like to give a local guy an option or opportunity there.
I think this is a small option, and we, what we'll do is, we'll ask for proposals, advertise, and let people. In the past, we have not found folks who are willing to come, because this isn't a big money maker.
And they, they do advertise, um, they have a big mail list, and it's, they do a bunch of auctions and do a mail list, and that's at their expense. We only put in illegals and master. But this auction here puts ads in all papers and journals. Also, um, we go into conjunction with the Sheriff Department, and we both put our stuff together, and which draws more people, and we get more, it sounds like we get better on our auctions doing that. So, and then we invite other, um, school system and police jury and all them to join if they want to.
All right.
So it's just a kind of joint, but we can keep that in mind.
Okay.
I have a question.
Ms. Robinson?
Um, have we ever, does he have facilities to put this auction on the internet?
I've never gone, he does have an internet, but I've never gone. But I do know that we get flyers all the time at different auctions, and he puts our stuff in there also.
Okay.
But this is the first time, I don't even think we have a vehicle. All of ours is just minor stuff, but the Sheriff Department's gonna have lots of stuff, and they're gonna bring it to our side. So it won't be work for us to do.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Lenore, Ms. Hamlin make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Gordon seconds the motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? There being none, it passes. Item number thirteen is Resolution number zero eight twelve thirty-five. Several legislators, one being Speaker of the House, Mr. Tucker, and a couple other individuals, are introducing bills into the state legislature. And then there's one proposed constitutional amendment to have centralized sales tax collection. State centralized, state-controlled centralized sales tax collection. We feel that we can better handle the sales tax collection in Morehouse Parish with the sales tax commission as it exists. We have a local sales tax commission, and the sales taxing bodies, each, excuse me, have representation on that body based on the percentage of sales tax that they assess. This is an attempt to bypass local governments. And all sales taxes, taxes that are collected, local merchants who are in the city of Bastrop, in Morehouse Parish, in the state of Louisiana, and outside the state of Louisiana, will send their sales tax that they're collecting to the state. And then the state would charge an administrative fee and then redistribute that money supposedly to the various bodies. Again, our experience and our desire is to maintain the local control. So, I'm asking that you adopt this resolution, which will be sent to the sales tax, the, the, our local sales tax collector, who's a part of the local sales tax commissioners organization. And they are consolidating this information from the Police Jury Association, School Board Association, the Louisiana Municipal Association, the Sheriff's Association, and other taxing bodies to support the opposition of these pieces of legislation. And I'm asking that this body go on record by resolving our opposition as well.
Mayor Hawkins?
Ms. Lenore?
By doing it, the state, would they eliminate, uh, someone locally, or at least, not use as many people as they need?
Well, in the office over there, there's Ron Carter and how many, how many other office personnel? There are four people who run, including Ron. There are four people who run the office here. And, you know, to me, the other advantage is, nobody knows Morehouse Parish community like our local folks do, when it comes to auditing, when it comes to finding businesses that aren't collecting sales taxes, and the, the capacity to, to, to do it. Baton Rouge is a long way away from here. They were prob, this is just my imagination of the scenario. They probably would have a centralized place in Baton Rouge, and then they have satellite offices in region. And those folks would attempt to come out and, and do what needs to be done. And I, I, I don't see it being effective. The system is not broke. It is not broke, so I suggest not fixing it right now. Ms. Goldman and Ms. Smith from our office serve on the commission. Uh, there are two people from the school board, two from the police jury. I appreciate it. Is it two from the police jury or one?
Two from the school board and one from the police jury.
Two from us. And then the smaller bodies split, where they each have a third vote each. And they meet and make decisions about when they have people who challenge, uh, that sales tax or question it. We had a situation that was ongoing for a couple years with, with International Paper Mill, and whether items should be taxable. And, you know, you would think that paying sales tax is a simple issue, but it's not. Because, uh, different entities, it's sales and use tax first, I need to establish that. And use, what is it, the hotel rooms, they pay so much per room, I believe? And pool tables and just all kinds of things. We can handle it better on a local level. And we just don't want to get bogged down in bureaucracy.
May I make a motion that we adopt Resolution zero eight, one, two, three, five?
Mr. Hamlin makes the motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll second his motion.
Mr. Gordon and Ms., and Ms. Robinson second his motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Being none, the resolution is adopted. Item number fourteen, Resolution number zero eight, one, two, three, six, a resolution informing the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality of actions taken to maintain permit requirements for Louisiana water discharge permit systems. Uh, there are two permits that, well, there's a permit that we have to, uh, two permits. Fifteen is similar situated. We have to renew these permits annually. Resolution number twelve thirty-six renews the permit for the main plant.
Mayor Hawkins, I'll make a motion. We renew, uh, renew these permits through Resolution zero eight, twelve thirty-six.
Mr. Gordon makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Hamlin seconds his motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It sounds unanimous. Uh, it passes. Uh, Resolution number zero eight, twelve thirty-seven, similar resolution, and the permit is for the West Treatment Pond.
Can I make a motion that we adopt Resolution zero eight, one, two, three, seven?
Mr. Lenore makes that motion.
I, sir.
I'll second.
Tripoli's second. About everybody on the left side. Mr. Gordon, Ms. Oliver, and Ms. Robinson. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. As have it. Item number sixteen, ordinance number zero eight forty-one sixty-four, an ordinance to amend section eleven point five dash twenty-five with the Code of Ordinances relative to historic district commission meetings. Mr. Lawrence, are you coming up?
Yes, sir. I received a request to, uh, to, to, to submit to the council a proposed amendment to, uh, section eleven point five dash two-five of the Code of Ordinances on behalf of the Bastrop Historic District Commission, because they have a requirement to meet once a month. And the understanding that I got is that they want permission to meet less frequently just on a quarterly basis, instead of once a month. And in order to authorize that, we would have to change the Code of Ordinances to remove reference to there being a once-per-month meeting, and to authorize the meeting to happen four times the calendar year on a quarterly basis, and for them to have, uh, other special meetings as they deem necessary. So this is sort of a housekeeping ordinance on behalf of the Bastrop Historic Commission, Historic District Commission, which, uh, is, uh, created and authorized by this body. Therefore, any change in their operating rules have to be changed by this body.
Make a motion.
I say.
Moving properly second to make the recommended changes. I was moving around that they would change proposed lists to meet quarterly. Is that-
Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no. As have it. Item seventeen, discussion and/or appointments on planning and zoning commission. It was referred to earlier that as we do the things that we need to do in the city of Bastrop, and we have signed the contract for our consultant to help us with our master plan for the city of Bastrop, an integral part of that is to have a functioning, uh, planning and zoning commission. We appointed a planning and zoning commission several years ago, and we did it for staggered terms. Those terms have expired. Many of the individuals have, uh, some of the individuals have moved from the city of Bastrop. Some of the individuals, when we contacted them, were no longer willing or able to serve. You were contacted and asked for recommendations, uh, for names to serve in this position, in these positions. And item packet number seventeen has the results. In District A, Mr. Charles Evans has agreed to serve. In District B, Mr. Obie Johnson was recommended, uh, and no response has been received from Mr. Johnson at this time. Mayor John Bond has moved out of the state, and he is no longer available, so we would need an individual named for District C. And District D, Ms. Louisa Bowie has decided, has agreed to serve. And, uh, in District E, Ms. Esther Washington has agreed to serve. I think that's a seven-member body. It's a seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I did call, uh, Ms. Jared Bardell.
Uh-huh.
And she agreed to serve on our end.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Bardell has agreed to serve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. One, two, three. Mr. Gordon, if you will, uh, take some time and recommend a person to serve from your district?
Mayor Hawkins, I've got, uh, some names in mind, but hadn't been able to make contact with yet.
No problem. Don't, 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 you'll have time to do that then.
Okay.
Let me be sure. Ms. Oliver, you feel that Mr. Johnson will serve?
I believe so.
Okay.
We'll go by and talk to him. The best time to get him-
The best time to get him because he may need to send a letter.
Okay. Let's do this then. From District A, Mr. Charles Evans. And these individuals declined the positions, then we will find someone else. Mr. Obie Johnson in District B. District C will be TBA. To be announced, Ms. Bowie from District D. One, two. That's a seven-member board, so one, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five. And someone from C. Okay. Let's appoint these individuals today and then fill in the vacancies at a later time. So the names are Mr. Charles Evans, Mr. Obie Johnson, Ms. Louisa Bowie, Ms. Jerry Bardell, and Ms. Estha Robinson. Washington, I'm sorry. Washington. Unless there's objection, let's appoint these individuals, and then we will need to fill in a couple of more spaces. Is there objection to that?
No.
The, I'm sorry. I was just looking at the the Code of Ordinances. The appointments are fine. There's a, did you see the staggering?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
What I want to do is get all the names, and then we will come in and draw for slots.
Yes, sir.
So is it a five-year staggering?
Seven years.
Seven-year staggering, okay. Okay. Can someone make a motion to adopt these, appoint these individuals at this time?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Olive Dust?
Second.
Mr. Hamlin seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and this is a work in progress. And we will finish out that list. Okay. Eighteen. It's time for bids for public works material. We received those bids. All right. Ms. Hall?
Bids were open and tabulated this week for construction supplies for the upcoming fiscal year. Base course aggregate, Johnsville Company. Their bid was fourteen dollars per ton. I recommend the contract for the base course aggregate for two thousand eight, two thousand nine be awarded to Johnsville Company based on their sole bid.
Can we get all these recommendations and do them at one time, Mr. Lawrence? Or do we need to take them individually?
Yes, sir. Are they in a written form?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, surface course aggregate?
Yes.
Johnsville Company, fourteen dollars per ton. They were the sole bidder. Number two, wash maintenance gravel, Johnsville Company, nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents per ton. They were also the sole bidder. Ready-mix concrete. We had three ready-mix and TXI. I recommend that ready-mix concrete for two thousand eight be awarded to Century Ready-Mix for their lowest bid. Rubber asphalt sealer, Williams Equipment and Supply, seventy-one dollars, seventy-one cents per pound. I recommend based on their sole bid.
Okay, go back to ready-mix concrete for just a minute, please.
Okay.
Okay, TXI and Century did the same?
Yes, sir.
The value was the same, the dollar amount was the same?
Right.
But you recommended Century because?
TXI, they requested a fifty-dollar per-hall charge for loads less than five cubic yards.
Okay.
And then also five dollars for straight cement mixes.
But Century didn't?
No, sir.
So the bid is the bid.
Right.
That's the cost we'll be paying.
Right. We would pay extra for the fifty dollars per hall, which we don't get maybe three.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure we hadn't understood it, because the numbers are the same, right? Yeah. Okay. Because that was an add-on for TXI, which would have increased the actual cost of utilizing that service. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. And coated metal cupboards. We had two contact construction products and coastal cupboards. I recommend that the contract for metal cupboards for two thousand eight, two thousand nine be awarded to contact construction products based on their low bid of twelve out of sixteen items. And our last was bituminous hot mixture. Drill contracting at seventy-five dollars per ton. I recommend them two thousand eight, two thousand nine based on their sole bid.
Drill has a new product that they are presenting to us. And we're anxious to see that product because we had some timing and availability issues. And I think, have we used that? I think we've used that process. Mr. McKee, have we used this process, this new drill product somewhere already?
No, we haven't used it yet, but we've got a place that we're going to use it.
Okay.
And all they ask is that we make some drilling progress.
Okay. Okay. All right. You heard these recommend, and you heard, and you have a copy of the recommendations made by Ms. Hall, who's a purchasing director for the city of Bastrop on these bid items. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we
Accept the recommendation.
Accept her recommendations upon the bid openings for the needed items in public work.
Is that second to Mr. Gordon's motion? Ms. Lenore and Ms. Robinson second his motion. If you're in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Just an announcement. I talked to the railroad company, the railroad company that goes south from here. They're going to be doing a rebuild of the Martin Luther King South Crossing, which has been in bad shape for some period of time. And we're collaborating with them as we did on the Commerce Street Crossing. And that will be done at some, in the near future. And we're helping them coordinate that time of construction and being sure that the school system and the church on that end of the street is aware because it'll be done on weekends, on the weekend. So they'll need to know to take an alternate route. Okay? I need, Ms. Robinson?
While we're talking about railroad crossings, if I dig out my letter that we got in two thousand and two, I think it was, maybe a little bit later, that the railroad company promised that they would fix the crossing right there on Cypress Street with the water company. And by two thousand and five, would the city write a letter?
We'd be more than happy to get in touch with them.
I'll dig that letter out tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, I need to ask that the agenda be expanded for, and one item that I need to bring forward.
I'll make a motion to expand the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Gordon, seconded by Mr. Hamlin, that we expand the agenda for another item. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor should say no. Thank you very much. Bingo Gold has been in our community for almost a year. We licensed them last year, I believe in July. And we have an agreement with them along with the actions that they take with none, there are five or six nonprofits, Mrs. King. Six nonprofits that participate and operate that facility. And the Gilbert brothers are managing it. We have a contract with them where they pay us ten thousand dollars a month. And then they do the sharing with the nonprofits and the rest of it. That was a one-year contract. I'm asking that that one-year contract, the ten thousand dollars, be extended to another year. And I'm also asking that the stipulation, the contract which allows them to be the only provider of that service be also extended for a year. It's a two-year contract, but I'm asking in advance that another year be added to it. That, we have, and I promised you, and we have not and are not including that ten thousand dollars a year into our operating budget. We are reserving that and billing that up for capital, capital projects. Projects like the painting of this building, which is solely needed, and the roof on this building that's needed, and just other items. So we're accumulating those funds. When Bingo Gold opened last year in June or July, whenever it was, they were the only provider of that service here. Since then, two other facilities opened. Lucky's out on four twenty-five east, and then Big Daddy's on one sixty-five south. Big Daddy stayed open for about a week, and they closed. And Lucky's is still surviving. But it did dilute the flow of business to Bingo Gold. This is not and will not be used unless you direct it to be done otherwise as part of our operation, but it is additional funding that we can use. And I want to be sure as much as possible that we can help this group continue to be viable. They employ between fifteen and twenty-five people. They use our local police department for security. I've talked to the police people who work there as well as Chief Walker. They don't present a problem to us. And I like to think that they're keeping some of the dollars that people use for gaming in our community. And folks are going to game. They are going to game. Whether they go to Greenville, Marksville, Vicksburg, Natchez, Shreveport, you know, down into the Indian casinos or wherever, they're going to game. And I just refuse as much as possible not to be hypocritical. And if folks are going to do it, and it's legal, we might as well allow it to be done in the city of Bastrop. The American Legion Hall has been there for years, and so has the BFW, and they have bingo games. So I'm asking that you permit us to extend the existing contract of ten thousand dollars per month, ten thousand dollars per month for another year. And also extend that permit, allowing them to be the only gaming, video gaming facility in Bastrop there. Bastrop cannot support more than one, one facility. Ms. King does extensive auditing and work with them. And that would be, it would be a point of saturating the business so that none of them will be viable. So since it's something that is an inevitability, we might as well support it the best that we can. So I would appreciate a motion if you feel comfortable in extending, giving those extensions.
I'll make a motion to extend the, to give the mayor permission to enter into the contract and extend in the contract with Bingo Gold.
Mr. Gordon makes that motion.
Second.
Mr. Hamlin seconds the motion. If you're in favor, say aye. If you're opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Okay. Liquor license. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have two liquor license applications. First one is Shamika Wiley, West Side Liquors and Groceries. It's on the corner of West Madison and Williams Drive, I believe it is. She's applied for a permit, class A retail dealer, off premises only, which is a package license. She meets all the requirements.
Where is that, chief?
West Madison and Williams Drive. Little building they built a couple, three years ago. It actually faces Williams Drive. But
The car wash there?
You're right. That on the corner, that the car wash, it sits down, Williams Drive. It's actually nineteen oh-two West Madison's address, but it, the door faces Williams Drive.
Used to be a store.
Right. And she's got a little, like, novelties and scents, candles, this type of thing. But she wants to sell packaged liquor. It's just a small operation that she has opened up. She's been open for a while, but she has not, you know, she just applying for a liquor license. I recommend that the license be approved. The next one is Richard L. Ridgell, Club Diamond, nine twenty-four Luther. It's the old General Colwell Building. Over Martin Luther King, Luther, excuse me, Luther is a little, actually goes across parking lot. It's called Luther Street. He has applied for a Class B retail dealer on premises, which would be mixed drinks, beer, whatever. It's a bar. That's what he's applied for. And he also meets the requirements as far as our ordinance and whatever. And I recommend that it be approved.
I make a motion for the one on Weeden Drive to be approved.
You're going to take them separately? The first one?
First one, Shamika Wiley, West Side Liquors and Groceries.
Okay. Mr. Hamlin makes a motion for approval of that license?
I second it, ma'am.
Mr. Lenore seconds that motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye. Those opposed should say no.
No.
Let the record show that Ms. Robinson votes no on that. Okay, the second one is the?
Richard Ridgell, Club Diamond, nine twenty-four Luther.
I'll make a motion that we approve, ma'am.
Mr. Lenore makes the motion. Is that second?
Second.
Mr. Hamlin seconds that motion. If you're in favor, say aye. Those opposed should say no.
No.
We have four ayes and one no. Ms. Robinson votes no on that one as well. License ought to be granted.
I'll answer.
Thank you very much. I didn't look beyond my second sheet. We have another, a couple of other items for the expanded agenda. Ordinance number zero eight, forty-one sixty-five. An ordinance amending ordinance zero seven, forty-one forty-four. Title ordinance adopting a consolidated budget general fund for all and all special revenue funds for the city of Bastrop for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seven, and two thousand eight. Somebody want to come up and explain that? Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, as last month, y'all voted to purchase a fire truck. We had to get state bond approval first. This is part of the process. Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Steve Nasaka has looked over everything. And one of the things they asked for is for us to amend our current balance that included our fund balance that was left over from last year. And they said that once we do that, we'll FedEx it in the morning, and everything should be a go on a new fire truck.
So we're amending and, amending the budget to make it compatible and compliant with fund commission requirements so that we can make the purchase.
That's correct.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Make a motion, ma'am.
Mr. Hamlin makes the motion.
I second.
Ms. Robinson seconded it. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no. The ayes have it. I had made a call on this, and I didn't know that this resolution came in. Did they give a date? Is it the July date? July? Okay. All right. We're trying to be proactive. We have two sales taxes in the city of Bastrop that will be renewing in oh-nine and ten, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. The cost of elections are getting more and more with the cost of the amount paid to commissioners and the cost of setting up elections and all. These are sales taxes which have been in place in the city of Bastrop for some period of time. I think we all know that my preference is for indefinite sales taxes, but our people tend to feel more comfortable with sales taxes that have a definite life. What we're doing this resolution is a resolution ordering and calling for a special election to be held in the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize renewal of sales taxes and use, sales and use taxes, therein making appreciation to the state bond, application to the state bond commission and providing for other matters in connection thereof. So we're trying to have these elections in July of oh-eight for sales taxes that will renew in oh-nine and ten so that we can just move on. These aren't new taxes, they're renewals.
We have anything to say, Mayor?
Put the two on the ballot this summer, yes, sir.
Is there anything else on the ballot, or just those taxes?
I'm not aware of any.
You're not aware?
I'm not aware of any. I don't know if any other bodies are putting anything to facilitate.
Do we have something in place to explain this publicly so everybody knows what's happening, and it's not a new tax?
We will. We will. We will do that if you approve this. You know, we don't want to be too optimistic, but we will explain to them these sales taxes and their uses. Yes. And it'll be, if this council feels comfortable, it will really be incumbent upon us to encourage our constituents to support these because these are integral in our operation.
Mayor Hawkins, the correct resolution number is twelve thirty-eight, is that correct? Mayor Hawkins, the correct resolution number is 1238, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution '08 1238.
Okay, Mr. Gordon makes the motion.
I second it.
Mr. Hamlin seconds the motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, and the ayes have it. Mr. Lawrence, you had a comment on that?
Uh, well, it was, I had a comment on number 11.
Yes, sir.
I just got a couple of questions on it. We actually wanted the council to use its power to enact this tonight, if it would.
Number 11?
Yes, sir.
He said immediately.
As a part of my motion, I said to affect it today's date.
No, 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 no. This is, this is the one that we thought we were introducing?
Right, well, yes. I was hoping what Mr. Gordon just said was right, but if he's not, I did hear, uh, the word introduction used when we finished the presentation on it.
I said that, and that was my note, and I thought that because it had penalties, but it's immediate?
That, we are requesting it.
Okay.
That it be immediate.
All right. Members?
That was my, that was my motion, ma'am.
Okay. Erase my introduction statement out of it?
Okay, I forgot.
And let the record show that this is effective immediately upon signing?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. What else have I messed up tonight? Uh, is there citizens who'd like to make a comment to this man, vote of all the persons? Yes, sir. You're going to be a citizen then.
Yeah. On the Bastrop Wings sign-up hopefully for the summer.
Yes.
Uh, we'd like to target the high school kids, but it's any high school. It doesn't have to be the Bastrop High. We'd love to have all of Bastrop High, but any area high school. Also, it's open to anyone interested in a career in aviation. It's not just high school youth.
Participate in the Bastrop Wings.
Anybody. Boo wants to come out, so, you know, I had to open it up to everybody.
She's younger than I am.
She can come out there every Saturday, nine o'clock. Can I throw a phone number out for everybody?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the airport number is 281-2018, or cell phone is 805-7125. So, we need to really get a bunch going. If the Army gives us a couple of hundred plus our seventeen, we could probably go to three, four hundred people. That'd be great. Any questions on the Fort Polk thing? It's wounded soldiers that are transitioning out of the Army that came back wounded from Iraq and Afghanistan, disabled, artificial limbs, wheelchairs, stuff like that.
I want to salute, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, please.
I want to salute you for the hard work that you've done. I know you had your moment there with emotions, and I think we were all moved when you read that letter to us, so I salute you for all the hard work.
I went through it after Vietnam, so it's just kind of a flashback.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You were wounded?
No, no.
With the people. Okay. I got a light. Okay. Yes, sir. You coming up to speak to us?
Yes, sir.
Please, if you'll introduce yourself and give us your address, we'd be more than happy to listen to you. Thank you.
James M. Murphy at 915 Gibb Street.
Thank you, sir.
Did you get the email today?
No, sir, I haven't had a chance to turn my computer on. I've been trapped.
That's okay. Your secretary took it for you, I believe, but that's all right. I knew you was getting in late. Representative Little has submitted to double the fines for noise, unnecessary noise.
Yes, sir.
So, we should hear something back in the next few months.
Okay.
All right, uh, let me take my glasses off so I can see. Uh, the reason I was here was just simply to ask y'all why we have let off on arresting those which are making unnecessary noise. We've, uh, become kind of placid, placid. We've only arrested just a very few in the last few months. Originally, in the first three months, we arrested seventy-five of them, and I was wondering if something has occurred.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, Mr. Walker, are you aware?
No, sir, there is no reason I'm aware of that they're written lists. I'm not disputing as where they've written lists tickets, but there's no specific reason for it. They write what they hear, if they don't hear it, they can't write it.
I haven't, I haven't heard as much loud music as...
You're correct. There is less.
They're still there, sir, and I'm not going to deny that, but like I say, there is no specific reason why they're not being written.
I would assume that if it's not much, as much music, loud music as there once was, then that will make the number of tickets written go down.
That would make perfectly good sense. However, when we do call them out, um, I've got complaints via my phone that when we call the police out to do something, they aren't really being proactive anymore.
Okay.
So, if y'all can do anything to help me, thank you.
Now, so you're saying that when you have called about complaints and the response has not been positive?
It would have been very negative.
Okay.
The noise is ongoing, and they do nothing.
Okay. And in the future, when that happens, as a follow-up, would you call Chief Walker and let him know when the incident occurred, and he will be able to track that from that?
Is that the gentleman on the corner?
This is Chief Jesse Walker.
I meet you.
Mr. Murphy? He's the, he's the police chief of the City of Bastrop.
The reason I wondered is because your internet still says Alan Freeman is in charge, so...
I noticed that.
Okay, I was confused.
Yes, sir. We have to update our internet.
Yes, sir, I'm going to try to hurry. It's getting very late for everybody. Number three item is, I'm going to recommend that there be a new law issued for a no noise zone. And what this would encounter is around hospitals, around schools, places like this that require or should have a quiet environment, that the fines be doubled in those facilities. And Mr. Little, Representative Little, will hopefully head that up and trying to get that taken care of for everybody.
Is no noise zone a normal use situation in these areas?
Well, you actually have signed up around your hospital that says no noise. Uh, what this is, is a reinforcement of that with double fines, like a construction zone.
Okay.
Um, there is a no noise ordinance in place by the federal government at the railroads that y'all can activate if you wish. If you don't want them to blow the whistle, you can go ahead and file out papers to stop that noise, but this isn't alone, this has nothing to do with that.
Well, I'll address that.
Ms. Robinson?
Chief Walker might can back me up. Is that that not a law already around the hospitals? I don't know about the fine, but around hospitals and schools?
Any unnecessary noise?
Exactly.
Be at the hospital or anywhere else.
Anywhere. It's the same everywhere, it just happens to have a sign by the hospital. What I'm looking for is reinforcement to double the penalty for it.
So, that's the issue?
And it'll be done statewide, it won't be done just in a city, of course.
So, Mr. Little is going to introduce this into state?
I've asked him to do that, and there was no resistance at this moment.
Okay.
Um, the last thing was, I had noticed in my research on the law about noise, that there is a law out there in various cities that deals with vehicles idling. It is minor for this city, but for some it's a very large issue, pollution, a waste of fuel, noise. And I just wondered if y'all are interested, you might do some research on, it's called an idling noise, idling law. It outlaws the use of a vehicle sitting there more than five minutes running, and again, they do it for pollution concerns, fuel economies, things of that nature. And it would also stop the boom boxes from just sitting there in the park. These big pieces of equipment on these boom boxes require the motor to be running. If you have another law which says your motor can't run, it would shut them down, so it'd be interesting to see.
We're always interested in seeing what else is out there. We'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir, I'll try to email you a copy of it, with the ones I found.
Thank you.
And that's it, sir.
Thank you very much for your presence. And thank you for the information. Ms. Robinson?
Could I address this again?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you coming, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
This has been a pet peeve of mine for a long time, and not to bring up bad memories, but when we lost our two policemen and we had the police from Monroe taking over, they wrote eleven noise ordinance tickets, and I was calling to ask if I would come to court and observe. And some of them, most fines, the biggest amount was assigned to these fines during that time.
Yeah, it was a hundred dollars.
Not that I had a lot to do with it, but I had, did approach the judge about this and ask him if he would help us out, because if, I had talked to other police chiefs in other cities, and they said once they got the message, it usually stopped. I think it has been stopped to a certain percentage, and I appreciate what they have done, even in the court, at the court level, but it does need to be addressed some more. That's not the only thing, but I feel like it is a lot better, and we have had some cooperation from the court system on this.
Yes, ma'am, I believe we have too.
And I'm not going to let it rest, if that makes you feel any better. I'm kind of like a dog with a bone when I get something on my mind.
I've got, every boom box person in town hates my guts.
Well, that's all right.
It's okay with me, too.
I don't care what, if they hate me or not, I just want to hear their music while I'm in bed sleeping at three o'clock in the morning.
Ma'am, you need to understand the attitude of the people that are doing this. They don't care what you want. They have a real bad attitude, and only these gentlemen right here can stop that and adjust it with monetary issues.
Well, I will have to say that we have had lots, good cooperation with police department on this.
I plotted what they've done, they did a good job.
But I also want you to be, understand that we are fourteen officers short. I walked in the parking lot at the city hall day before yesterday, and all the cars that seemed were sitting in, and I wondered if they were on strike, but it's because we're so low on officers that they're having to double up, and sometimes that sort of thing has to take maybe third place when they have a lot more pressing things coming, so be patient with us.
I was expecting him to mention that, I already knew about that problem, and to me, that probably played a very big role in it. Thank you.
But thank you for coming forward.
We had a gentleman to come, thank you very much, Ms. Murphy. We had a gentleman to come and see us several years ago about Jake Brakes. Do you remember that?
Yes, sir. He's in my district.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, I wish you'd investigate to see existing ordinances on Jake Brakes. It seems that, it seems that, I don't know how much they're used in the city, but I noticed, because my house is at the city limits, it seems that they start slowing down right at the city limit line, and that's when I really started learning what Jake Brakes are. It wasn't an irritant to me, but I can imagine that if they do this at other stoplights and other places, it presents a problem. So, I'm interested in getting information to see, uh, how other municipalities, and I've seen signs, no Jake Brakes allowed, so let's see what we can find about that, and we can have a discussion and decide if we want to implement that or not. Okay, is there anything else on our agenda?
Adjournment.
No, we haven't signed.
Is that appropriate?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second.
If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Ms. Robinson?
I'm sorry. I'm trying to figure out where we signed.